All right. Thank you, Rebecca.
You're welcome.
Hi, everybody.
Hi, everyone.
Hello.
It seems like we have most people here. Arlen, is Tom here?
I think so, yeah. I think he's muted and his video is not working, but he's here.
Okay.
There he is.
There he is.
He's the man of the hour.
Yeah.
Great, then I think I'm just gonna get right to it and call the meeting to order at 4:34. Are there any agenda changes that we need to make, reordering?
No.
Great. And just for my chair's report, I was just going to say thank you to everyone for being so flexible for joining this meeting. You know, it's just what happens, I guess, these days, but I do appreciate there was a lot of behind-the-scenes communication. Arlen, thank you very much.
Oh, you're welcome. Thank you.
That, so, that was about it for me and a report. Are there any members who wish to speak? Yes, Jill?
I'd like to welcome Maria. I'm so glad that she's on our meeting, and I would like to suggest, would it be all right if we just briefly introduce ourselves to her?
Yes, that would be great. I was going to do that when we got to that, but we could start right now.
Oh, we can wait.
That's okay. It's fine either way. And let me just see what Jan had to say first under "Member Speak."
Right. I want to let everybody know at this point that I will not be running again, and so it's time to look for somebody new. I think there were a couple of people that were interested last year, who, when they heard that Laura was going to run, figured it would be good for her to get on, and they would wait and come on another year. And so that year is now, and so I hope that whoever knows these people will let them know that it's wide open. Jill will be running again, but I will not, so that's that.
Well, that is very sad news, Jan.
Well, maybe.
We will miss you, that's for sure.
That's been a long time. Twenty-one years is a long time, and it's good to have some younger people. And Jill has been on even longer than I, so she can hold up the Mort and Jan and Jill end of people been on for a long time.
Right. Any members needing to speak? Jill?
Just something that I feel that does need to be said. We have a wonderful school district, and we have a wonderful elementary school. I just feel compelled, though, to say, in light of what's been going on in our nation, I'm assuming that the schools have all kinds of resources to help our teachers to address some of the things that have been going on, and I know that there's been a lot of... There's a lot of resources, whether it's Teaching Tolerance, the National Association for the Education of Young Children, the American Association of School Psychologists. Mas Mass has a lot out to... just resources to talk to our students about the topsy-turvy stuff that's going on and what they might be seeing on the media. I definitely do want to stay away from politics, of course, we're not supposed to, but just for children to be dealing with civics, you know, and Constitution. And I know that there's been talk in the past, and maybe it's happening, about some sort of civics going on, education for our children, but there's a ton of resources out there, so I'm assuming our school people know about it.
Mary Beth?
And just, thank you, Jill. Yes, we absolutely have those resources available for all of our teachers. And prior to school opening, I did respend the 2018 frameworks that has the civics component in it for history and social science, and that has been a topic of conversation. I just signed up today from MSAA, another workshop on bias in the schools. And so this is information that I'm able to share with the staff when we have curriculum meetings, so thank you for that.
And also, you know, we do, we're so concerned about our social, emotional shape of our students, so thank you.
Thank you.
And Martha?
Just two things. Number one, this is the second time I've said this in a meeting this week. Check out our strategic plan on the website if you haven't, or if you have, just review it. I think that will fill us with even more confidence in our staff than we already have. The second thing is to just express awe and gratitude for the amazing art displays that I get to see every morning when I walk through town, and every morning there's something new to look at. And, or maybe it's just that I forgot what I had seen the day before, so I'm moved every single day to tears. It's beautiful, beautiful, from-the-heart stuff that... It just makes me so happy to see the school so much a part of the community. So I just want to share that and say thank you, Mary Beth, and staff.
Thank you, Martha. All right. Then I'll move us on to Citizen Speak. We do have, I see Fred McGee. Hi, Fred, thank you for coming. I didn't know if you had anything to say during Member Speak, or you're just...
No, I'm just here to be here.
Great.
I see your piano in the background. Fred, can we have a little music after the meeting, perhaps?
You want me to play you out? Is that the idea? Possible. That is possible.
All right, moving on then, priority business. Welcome, Maria Broadbent. We are so happy to have you meet and have you join us today, tonight. I think maybe we should go around and just introduce ourselves. I'm Betsy Pontius. I'm the Chair. My kids went to Wellfleet. I've had a very close connection with Wellfleet Elementary, then built on my years as a school committee member. So why don't, let's see, do you want me to call on people so we don't interrupt Jill? Do you want to say hi next?
Okay, so I'm Jill Putnam, and I have been on the school committee for a very long time. I have a diverse background in education. I have my bachelor's and my master's in education. Presently, I work for the National Association for the Education of Young Children that deals with accreditation of early learning programs. I used to work for DUI, like Betsy, but in kindergarten and teaching preschool integrated special needs. I have experience teaching at a community college. So just my experience in education. I've been on the school committee a long time and very seasoned.
Jivana, do you want to just say a quick hi?
Hi, Maria. Nice to see you again.
You too.
We met Maria, Superintendent, and I met her, oh my goodness, a couple months ago. New central office. I'm the Director of Finance and Operations for the District. I've been with NOS at nine years now. It's a wonderful community. You're gonna enjoy it here. Welcome.
Great. Jan?
Sure. Jan Plowey. I've been on the school committee, as I said, twenty-one years, and have enjoyed very much seeing the great education that we're able to provide for our children. It's just been inspiring and a wonderful thing to feel. We've constantly gotten better and better and better, which is an amazing thing to be able to say in over twenty years. I truly feel that, and welcome to you because I think, and I hope that you will enjoy Wellfleet. It's not without its problems, but I think the school will be a high point of your life here.
Thank you.
Martha?
Yeah, I am on the school committee. I think this is my third term. I am a recovering elementary school teacher and educator, and I have spent most of my life in elementary schools. When I became the Youth Services Librarian here about fifteen years ago, I spent a lot of time in the school, and as I did, I absolutely fell in love with the place and could not keep myself away, and decided one way to be supportive of the school was to run for school committee, and I've been running ever since. It's a wonderful school. It's a community place. I keep thinking I wish I had taught there when I was younger. So I keep trying to get back in there in different ways, too. I'm kind of sneaky. But it's wonderful to be here.
Laura?
I am a new as well. It's just, it's my first term on school committee. We moved to Wellfleet about three years ago from Virginia. I'll have three kids in the school next year. And I have a background in education. I worked as an education specialist at a museum for twelve years in Virginia, and then moved here, so now I work national parks seasonally at the seashore, and I love the school committee and the community here, so.
Great. Mary Beth?
Hey, Maria. Mary Beth Rodman. How are you?
All right.
This is my twelfth year in Wellfleet. I was an associate principal for four years prior in a town next to Plymouth called Carver. I was a teacher for seventeen years. I was a first-grade teacher as well as a pre-K teacher. I have a reading background, and currently I am working with a student from one to two every day in grade two in the realm of reading, and I love it. And it's a wonderful community. The school is very connected to the community, and I look forward to having all of these restrictions of protocols lifted so that we can warmly welcome you into the building.
Thank you. I look forward to it, too.
Thank you.
And Tom?
So, nice to see you again, Maria, and I certainly want to thank you for... Maria and I have worked on a couple of things already together, and I want to thank you for how responsive you've been. And every time that I've tried to reach you, you pick the phone right up. That's not always happening in my world. And I really look forward to working with you on a number of issues on behalf of Wellfleet. And so, welcome, and it's great to have you, and thank you for working so hard for us, so.
Great. And Fred, do you want to make an introduction as well?
Those are two questions. Do I want to, and should I? I'm the Chair of the Finance Committee in Wellfleet. I'm also the liaison to the schools, with everybody on the Finance Committee has a liaison relationship. I talk to Mary Beth and Tom on a pretty regular basis. They've stopped making the sign of the cross when I show up, which I take as a part of it. That's it. Here I am.
All right. Thanks, everybody. So we invited Maria to our meeting. It was my understanding that we had questions about the CARES Act. Martha, are you remembering that as well? Do you want me to hand it over to you right now, Martha, so you could begin our discussion? No?
Like Fred, I have two questions. I was concerned at our last meeting, I believe, we realized that, or it was brought to our attention that we had run out of money for the school, that the CARES Act money was all used up, and that we ended up spending a portion of our regular budget on things that we needed in order to open up the schools, and that really was what I wanted to address and just make sure that that doesn't happen again. In the meantime, we did receive a letter from, I believe from Mike Hurley, about figuring out how to make reparations, as it were. I'm not sure what happened with that, but I was concerned about the fact that the money had been spent. And I just wondered what the protocol was, how the money was assigned to begin with, and it was probably before your time, Maria, so I'm not sure that you can even answer it fairly.
I can do my best.
Okay.
So my understanding is that, you know, folks were basically told to spend what they thought they needed to address, you know, operational issues associated with, you know, changes that we had to make because of COVID. But those were funds that weren't necessarily, in order to be reimbursed, they were funds that weren't necessarily an aligned item. Chief Hurley has been working with the state and with, on the federal level, FEMA to get what we can reimbursed. And, you know, where I was in Maryland, we actually, the process for the state there, same funding, but the process there was that specific types of uses for COVID spending were approved in advance. And Massachusetts didn't do that, so you were on your own to make your case, but they were perfectly within their setup to say, no, sorry, Charlie. So they've since gotten a little better, and I'm sure Chief Hurley has reached out to you. He's still coordinating the reimbursement process. But what, you know, what the state has done most recently in the last few weeks is indicate that some of the things that FEMA wasn't going to cover that they were going to cover. So we're getting down to nickels and dimes left on any of that. I know I'm about to purchase some signage and some equipment so that our staff can use Zoom more efficiently. But, you know, we're getting down to nickels and dimes, and if there still is any availability for the town's allotment, the chief will reach out to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for everyone's time. You know, I'm a product of Maryland public schools in sort of the early ages of AP programs there, and, you know, proud of it. I took AP Biology in high school. I'm trained as an ecologist in natural resources policy my undergrad, and I can tell you that my AP Biology class in high school was harder than some of the ones I had in college. You know, my participation in school boards and school budgeting has basically been ancillary, but I do have thirty years of local government experience, and, you know, I understand the balance that has to be obtained there between operating the town and educating its children. So, you know, I'm grateful for the time. I'm not gonna stay on your whole meeting because I'm, you know, a new homeowner and I'm peeling wallpaper today. But I'm always available to meet with you individually or through the school committee, and, you know, as you've done, just, you know, schedule me through Rebecca, who does a fantastic job of making sure that I don't overfill my calendar and pay close enough attention to things that, you know, I should be, so thank you. I, too, worked for the National Seashore as a seasonal. Not to age myself, but the season of eighty-six and eighty-seven, you know, I turned twenty-one working at the Salt Palm Visitor Center and living in the Salt Palm House, which unfortunately has been demolished by the park, but what a wonderful walk to work I had.
Cool. Very cool.
Happy to answer any questions that folks might have, Betsy.
Is there anyone who would like to comment or question before we leave this agenda item? Mary Beth, I thought I saw your hand up. Did you have something, or...
Thank you. I just wanted to say that Chief Hurley did reach out to me, and he asked for if we are going to receive additional monies through the CARES Act to resubmit what was not covered. So we put together an Excel spreadsheet that needed to incorporate who the vendor was, what the item was for, so that he could find where it might fit in the CARES Act. So we had resubmitted, if you will, just under $32,000 of things that we could apply to COVID-related expenses, and right now he only found about $2,000 that might not fit one of those criteria. So we'll see what happens.
Good. She's been doing a Yoma's job of chasing all that stuff down. It's something that probably would normally be done by a finance person or someone in the accounting office, but as you've probably heard, you know, we're in a little bit of transition there, so, you know, and, you know, I promise you, when we have this discussion this time next year, that you're gonna see things in a much different shape than they were when I walked in in August. So I appreciate the chief's willingness to just carry the mantle on that, and he's been doing an excellent job.
Thank you. Anyone else? Well, Maria, thank you on behalf of the committee. We really appreciate your time this evening, and we certainly hope to see you again in the future.
Yeah, anytime, and thank you for inviting me.
Thank you. Bye.
Bye-bye.
All right, I'm gonna move us to our next agenda item, which will be our Administrator's Report, and we'll begin with Mary Beth.
I do not have any additions to the report, so if... I guess I should, I'm gonna take that back. We do have one family that came to us as a result of COVID. And they have two children in our school, and they're planning on moving back home to the peninsula area. So when you see the report next time in terms of enrollment, it might be down to students. Other than that, I don't have anything additionally to add, and I'm open to questions.
Does anyone have questions? Yes, Jan, I see your hand.
Betsy, I do. Mary Beth, I think your principal's report said there were ninety children in school and there were eleven remote, and yet the total is a hundred and five, so that doesn't add up. So can you explain to me how it's a hundred and five?
Where did, I don't know where the one-oh-five is.
The one-oh-five is in our...
Oh, that was from the October one reporting.
Yes.
So we've had kids who have moved to remote or have moved to homeschool.
Oh, homeschool, so...
Correct, so we don't record homeschool.
We don't record homeschool, so that means we've lost four kids to homeschool since October.
It's completely related to COVID.
Okay, good to...
So they're, I'm confident that they'll be back as soon as they're able.
Okay. Okay, and also going along with the numbers, because to me, it's very important. I've mentioned this before, and I just hope the FinCom and everybody else who's interested in our budget will understand about the preschool moving to Eastham, because if you, if you look at the total number of students that we've had the last two years and realize that they don't include the preschool, you would see that our enrollment is up quite a bit. But if you don't realize that difference and that connection, you'd think it's level or lower. So somehow I just want to make sure that everybody who has an impact in deciding about the budget that we have will understand that.
I don't know if I should respond as a member of the Finance Committee, but I think we try to take an ecumenical view every year, given the ups and downs of the school budgets relative to the students who are passing through and when the next wave is coming, and when a wave leaves one school and heads on to another, especially for special needs kids, and at least in my experience, Tom and Mary Beth have always been really good about explaining the issues that individual members might have concerns about. Obviously, that doesn't change the fact that some years the budget's way up and some years it's not. So I wouldn't worry about it. I think there are probably more fundamental concerns about schooling on the Cape than the rising and falling of the budget year to year.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other response to Mary Beth's principal report? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to Tom's report.
So thank you very much, and I'd like to take advantage of thanking Fred, who has been such a great partner in terms of understanding the budget needs for the school and the community. He always takes the time to check in and ask good questions and stay abreast of what's happening with our budgets, both at the elementary level and the region. So thank you so much for it. I wanted to share with you that a week ago, I got the opportunity to spend a few hours up at Wes, and it was great to spend some time talking education with Mary Beth and walk around and see the kids and observe some of the learning that was taking place. And it's just, if you want to start your day off on the right way, you want to go to Wes and walk around. And Mary Beth and her staff are doing a wonderful job, and I advise to bring a light coat with you at the very least, and it's good to have fresh air in that building, and things are going exceedingly well. So congratulations to that staff and leadership of Mary Beth, so thank you. It was a joy to spend that time with you. I'm pleased to tell you that Mort is doing a great job on negotiations, and he's been quite active, and we're moving along. We're in a phase now where we are... We just finished having two small subcommittees working on two major issues that our deal break is probably in the negotiations, and I think we've successfully concluded those two efforts, and we'll be bringing back the entire team, the middle to the end of the week, to get caught up on all the individual work that's been taking place. And then I think we're making the push, from that standpoint, to understand what the COLA will be for this year, and we're looking at a three-year contract, including this year, so also COLAs for the next two years out. Really hope that we finish our work in two or three weeks. And Mary Beth, by the way, has been working on a subcommittee on updating the language and the evaluation, and I know that was moving along very nicely, and we thank her for that extra effort that she's making relative to that. I would like to tell you that, you know, these days are not without challenge, and I want to bring some focus, of course, to our nurses across the district. And we have been dealing with a number of cases throughout the last few months relative to something going on on the weekend, and all of our nurses have been great about giving some of their time or volunteering to help each other so that we could continue to move forward with school as we know it. And I think the fact that at Wes, we've been in basically every day... And I think the fact that at Wes, we've been in basically every day of our school year is a tribute to the efforts that I think people in the community and, and the school district are doing to make that, that happen. And I can, I can tell you that there are a lot of happy students because of that. And we're going to continue that effort going forward. And I think that I'll leave it at that. We got a big joint school committee meeting coming up. An ambitious, ambitious agenda. And I'm hoping at this point that we can get everyone there. And I can tell you just a couple of things to whet your appetite, that we're going to be looking at the testing program that the governor's been talking about in terms of testing both students and staff. And Mary Ellen Reed will be joining us, our lead nurse, to have a conversation with all the boards relative to that. And, and some reconfiguration concepts going forward. But that's as far as I can go now. So, thank you.
All right, thank you, Tom. Jan, I see your hand up.
Yes, I wanted to ask Tom just briefly if he can update us on the high school situation. I keep reading one thing or another in the newspaper. And we're going to have a universal vote, and we're not. And you're getting some troubles, and maybe an extension is possible from the state. So if you could explain where we are.
Thank you, Jan. We have a really important meeting on Thursday to finalize a few things. But I can tell you what I do know, Jan, is that we spent a great deal of time looking at the current situation with the virus in all of our communities. And, and at least two of our town halls have yet to even open up the door at all. And this partial and, and another one. So we have been very, very concerned about the ability to have town meetings and, and then a voting process going forward into the, into the early spring. And so we actually had the regional board who reversed their vote and decided that they were going to move forward with the region taking care of its own election. And that means paying for it. And running an election that would still give every voter some clearance in terms of when they would be voting and how they would be voting. And that was decided by the board to move forward with that model. And in that model, right now, we have plans to have the vote on March 30. And last, last Thursday, decided that the, if people were to choose to go to polls, to vote, it would be from 11 to 7 on the, on the 30th. I have been working with the town clerks of the four towns now. I probably had four or five items working with them. And I'm learning a great deal about what a town clerk does, particularly around elections. And we are moving forward with a postcard program. And that would set in place the ability for residents in Wellfleet to make a decision, would they like to vote through the mail? And, and that involves two postcards that come out. And if you send one back that's, that has been stamped for you, then you'll be getting a ballot mailed to you to vote. And so there are two ways to do that voting. And I can tell you that we're, obviously, we were caught off guard by some news over the end of last week relative to the situation with waivers. And we spent at least five meetings, and not the whole meeting, but within those five meetings, of having clarity on whether or not we were going to be given an additional extension.
Right.
We had an extension out to, got us into the month of May. And we were told each and every time that it would be no more extensions going forward. And that's what really locked us in on going towards the voting on March 30, which would be clean. We wouldn't have to worry about whether or not town meetings were on time or, you know, other issues got in the way of having, having the vote going forward. And, and so we were just as surprised to hear the news that Representative Whalen had moved forward and, and reached out relative to whether or not we would get another waiver going forward. We were caught off guard by that, and we didn't know that was taking place. And in terms of even our discussion this coming Thursday, I think the general consensus of many of the members on the, on the committee is that we have now committed lots of efforts, particularly setting up the election for March 30. And I don't think there's anyone right now in, in, in any of our towns who could say for sure, we are going to have this, this meeting on a date in March or April, or possibly even May. So the other piece that many of us take forward is that the most important thing is that it doesn't change the number of votes that people get. Everyone was going to get one vote in the process. And, and in this process, that is exactly the same. And I am, I am not stupid to understand that for some people in some of our communities, they were, they were not overly pleased that we had changed in term, terms of how the vote would be counted. And in the old way, you would be trying to get a favorable vote in the town hall that you live in, and then eventually go to the ballot and vote, in many cases, at the, at the polls. And it would take four votes at town meetings, because we have four towns, and four at the polls. And we didn't ask for this nightmare that we've been dealing with, with the virus and, and all the problems that it has caused. And, and so I think it's safe to say that we are comfortable moving forward with the process we've been now working on for almost a month to put in place. And we'll see it go forward, I'm sure, after Thursday's meeting. So along with that, Jan, thank you. We are looking to have a number of, we have a flyer that's about to go out across the entire district, every household. We're going, we're now looking to set up Google chats. And a number of you I know came on over the summer when you were looking at the protocols, you were looking at the opening day issues. And we were running 500 people in those meetings with a moderator. And we anticipate a pretty aggressive schedule with that, that process so that people can get their questions answered. And we can get out accurate information about what's happening and what isn't happening going forward.
Is there anything we can do, Tom, to help you, to help with this process?
So we just spent some time with the campaign on election rules and so forth. So there's a lot I would like to tell you you can do. But I can tell you that we, we are hoping across the board that people are, if they're not registered to vote, they're moving forward to doing that. And, and we want to bring clarity to when and how we vote this project. And so I think I've, I've tried to help you understand that better in this meeting. And, and I would encourage every resident, as we roll out opportunities to learn or ask questions or find out more information, take advantage of it. And, and remember, we have a pretty robust website on the building project. And we would advise each and every citizen to take advantage of that.
Yes, Martha.
Thank you. Tom, I have a question that was very clear, but I missed one thing. I wondered, has a decision been made, actually, whether we will or will not get a waiver? Is that still actually up in the air?
So right now, it's, it's a little bit up in the air, Martha, only because I can't speak for all the members on the committee. And that media, meeting, I believe, is going to be this Thursday. But, but I can tell you that there's great concern that we can't, we can't pull this off. And, and there's a whole nother piece of this. There's a 60-day window once we announce that we're moving forward. And if it's not voted on within those 60 days, it automatically passes. And nobody wants to see that happen. We want the citizens to make the decision here. So I can tell you, after Thursday, there's a very good chance we are locked in. But right now, there is no movement to even touch that issue of the waiver at this point. We're way down the road already in terms of, I've, I've had to, interesting enough, I, I've never been involved in mass mailings. But we, we've committed to, it's actually called mass mailing, who will take care of all the mailings, all the stamps and all of that. And they do the census for all the towns and other, some tax bill mailings in some of the towns. And so the town clerks have been working on this a great deal over the last three or four weeks already to set it in motion. So after, after Thursday, we'll, we'll try to get something out in a big way that people know exactly where we stand, Martha. So thank you for that question.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments for Tom's report? Fred?
Am I allowed to ask a question? Yeah?
Make it an easy one, Fred.
It's more like a comment. I, I will speak as, in my capacity, as Finance Committee Chair, but not as an advocate, one way or the other. So I'm going to try to walk this line. You are probably aware that there are advocacy groups out there who are trying to kill the high school project in a variety of ways.
Yep.
Including calling to question whether we should, the region should participate in school choice. And wouldn't we have a less costly option if there was no school choice? Because you have fewer students. And that the state would, I've seen recent letters that came to our committee that the state will, of course, continue to provide aid. So it's, it's a bogeyman that we lose state aid if you lose the MSBA grant, and so on, and so on, and so on. There's, there's arguments that are being made. But I think from my perspective, at least from our focus on the Finance Committee, they sort of net out to kill the project and then rethink it. Come up with a smaller high school, bring the other one up to scale, whatever it is. The reason I mention this, and this ties back, I think, to the vote that you're talking about, is that there is so much flood out there right now. Flood, for those who might not know, that term is fear, uncertainty, and doubt. There's so much flood out there where there is not clear information about the alternatives. For example, a simple one, is the region mandated to provide school choice, or is it a choice? And if it were to be gated, if you were to drop school choice, would that require a vote of the region, of the voters? Or could you just do it? These are questions that have come up, and I'm, I'm not sure I know the answer, and we've talked a lot. I think it would be advantageous to have a clear fact sheet. A pro con, if you like, that says, here are the arguments against, here are the arguments for, where, in a sense, you're debating yourself. And just lay it out there, let people see what the arguments are for and against, for example, building the new high school at scale. Because I think short of that, the, the noise, the background noise may, it's hard to say, gain or cost you votes that could be certified more, more easily if people actually knew the facts.
So thank you, Fred. And, and this is exactly what we're talking about in terms of our campaign to get accurate and fair information out there. I'll draw two points to your, two, two answers to your points, Fred. First of all, I want to be totally clear for everyone. When we entered into the Massachusetts School Building Authorities Program, everyone knew that when we came up with a model that we were going to bring forward, that is the model. When someone says that I don't like the size of the auditorium, we should make it smaller. The project is the project. There's no changing it at this point. It is the model that the MSBA is going to participate in with no more changes. Okay? And the other thing that I would tell you, Fred, relative, thank you, because of the two really important pieces, is on school choice, the town of Wellfleet, this board knows very well that we are voting in Commonwealth of Massachusetts in the spring. Each district is supposed to take up the issue of school choice and whether or not they're going to participate or not participate in that program. And that's done across the entire Commonwealth. And that vote is taken by the school committee of the school that's governing that, that program. So those are two answers to those two pieces, Fred. And I thank you, because you're absolutely right. And, and we're very, very anxious to begin some of the discussions, questions and answers with the, the citizens in the four towns. We're also relying on using the TV studio, which seems to be working very, very well for us. We're averaging three, over 3,000 people on a hit, on a show that we're doing. And that's a great number for us. And, and so I think you're exactly right, that we need to be very clear exactly what we believe and what we're doing. And, 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 and quite honestly, I think if we are able to communicate what exactly happens in this program, I think that people will look at that and say, it's a 50-year-old building that needs a great deal of work. And no matter what happens, we have to do something. This cannot continue and wait for it to get 60, 70 years old. The last point I would say is that, as you know, in all building projects with the MSBA, a building committee is formed. And in this case, we had 17 people on the building committee who have worked years on this project. I believe we've been in, beyond five years of work on this project already. And, and if anyone thinks that we're going to get out of this project and get right back in line and get state funding, I think needs to think twice about it. It's just not going to work that way. So thank you.
You're welcome. I would just add, as, as representing, again, the Finance Committee, we get correspondence that suggests that the demographics going forward on the Cape argue for a smaller school. And this is, to me, an esoteric kind of calculation, because it's looking at 10, 20 years and saying, what do you need a school for 900 or 1,000 kids when 6, 700 will do? Without having any insight into whether there might be an influx of younger families 10 years from now as people like me age out and disappear, exit stage left, and you might need more capacity. So these are questions that are above our pay grade. And it's one of the reasons that the Finance Committee, in Wellfleet anyway, has basically said, we're not going to, like, take a position on whether school choice makes sense. It's not, not our job. It's not our job to determine whether you guys have designed a good school or not. It's ultimately, I, I, I take the position in general that you trust the experts who've spent years working on things to have gone through the vetting process. Not everyone believes that, but that's at least currently what our policy is.
So, so thank you, Fred. And, and one more comment to that is that two summers ago, I spent a great deal of my time running around to each of the four towns. And I can remember coming up into Wellfleet numerous times because I was chasing data for, for the MSBA on forms that required us to understand how many single home, new building permits were taken out, multi-purpose, multi-size, and on and on and on and on. All this information was gathered to, to answer to the questions on, on documents for the MSBA. The MSBA set the number. Okay? Let me just say that one last time. Nauset Regional School Committee didn't set the number. They took all of that data, hundreds of pages of data on the growth, the, the lack of growth, the numbers of people pulling building permits, and on and on, and settled in on the number of... and settled in on the number of 907. That was the MSBA. They took the data, they took the information, they told us what size that school would be. And so that's how it locks in. And, uh, and that's the number, 907. And the building project is the building that we have with no changes. So, thank you. Thank you, Fred.
All right. Thank you. I am going to move us along. So Giovanna, if you could take us through the FY21 budget expenditure report.
Certainly. Let's go directly to page 11 of the report, please. The prior month balance was $146,166. We spent or encumbered since last month's reporting, $34,132, leaving a balance of $112,034. We still have, uh, money in school choice that was budgeted, um, to be used in fiscal 21 of $20,000. So, um, combined, we have available $132,034. I'm going to highlight the items that were over $1,000 of, um, movement since last month's reporting. Starting on page one, at the top of the page, line item 4003, the salary central office. We spent or encumbered $1,183 since last month's reporting. Line item 4016, salaries instructional coordinators. We spent or encumbered $5,670 since last month's reporting. And that's, um, contractual. Any questions on page one? Moving on to page four. At the top of the page, line 4070, special education salaries ed assistant. We spent or encumbered $20,781. And that was due to, um, staff leaving and a new hire encumbered since last month's reporting. Moving on to page five, towards the bottom of the page, line M4076, special education supplies materials. We spent or encumbered $1,515 since last month's reporting. And that's all based on need. Moving on to page seven, at the top of the page, line of 4040, salaries nurse. We spent or encumbered $1,268 that, since last month's reporting. And that's based on need during the summer as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic. A little bit for the down, line item 4043, supplies medical. We spent or encumbered $1,619. And that is, um, items, uh, we purchased a defibrillator since last month's reporting. Any questions? Moving on to, um, that's it.
Anybody have any questions? Giovanna? Yes, Jan? You, you need to unmute.
132,000, Giovanna, um, is a very, I think, very healthy surplus at this particular time in the year. Am I correct? Okay. And as I am anticipating or looking at the budget next, for the next year, I see things that need some of that surplus, I guess. I know that we can't actually take any money from this budget and put it into next year's budget until, um, you know, after, uh, yet when, uh, May or June or the end of the June 30th kind of thing. But I know this is a crazy question. But can we anticipate that there will be some money there so that we can maybe add a few things to the budget that we're looking at for the next school year that need shoring up?
That would be a conversation, Principal Rodman, um, to see what it is that she needs for fiscal 22 that's not, um, currently in the budget.
Well, how about her, her salary? How about her raise?
Well, what, what happened, yeah, what's happened when you look at, when we go through the FY22 budget documents, since we have not, um, ratified any of the collective bargaining units contract.
Right.
In fiscal 21, we had a, a pool of funds at the end of the budget documents, reserve for negotiation.
Right.
So for fiscal 22, since we are still negotiating, I had to set up another, a line item, again, for fiscal 22, we reserve for negotiation. So when you go through most of the salary line items, you'll see that they're, they're level funded.
Right.
So that, that's what, that's what's happened. But the, the, the funds are there. It's just the bargaining has not come to a conclusion. So I can't go in and put the sound line items to what they should be, because I don't know what that's going to be.
I understand that part, but I, um, the principal's salary is not collective bargaining. Um, I don't understand that part of it. That's what I'm talking about.
Okay.
You know, she's been level funded the last two years. Well, everybody else gets a raise. So, you know.
To keep consistent, I put everything in reserve for negotiation, even the administrators.
The administrators. Thank you. Okay.
Sorry for the confusion.
Okay. I didn't understand that part. Okay. Thank you very much.
Any other questions about FY21? Okay. I'm going to move us on to the introduction and review for the, um, FY22 proposed budget. And Mary Beth, you going to start us off?
I am. And I was hoping to, um, let me just see. I'm going to try when I get to sort of the middle of my presentation to share my screen. So I usually do it on Google. I'm not used to doing it on Zoom. So hopefully I'll be able to figure it out. So I start with my presentation. Wellfleet Elementary School believes that every child matters, is unique, deserves to feel safe and has the capacity to learn. Regardless of in-person or remote learning, Wellfleet Elementary School faculty and staff demonstrate commitment to our mission to prepare each student to succeed in an ever-changing world by providing a rigorous academic program that integrates social, emotional and global awareness. As demands have shifted as a result of the pandemic, the West faculty and staff continue to work collaboratively with families to ensure every student receives the best in-person or remote learning experience. Wes, ever mindful of family's health and wellbeing, remains a community hub, providing appropriate supports such as health and wellness information and resources from Nurse Frozen, social, emotional information and resources for Mrs. Francis, up-to-date school and district announcements, technology devices, learning materials, creative resources and grab and go meals. As we plan forward, our goals and priorities are inspired by the changing educational landscape. Wes is dedicated to teaching 21st century skills, developing students' cognitive, interpersonal and interpersonal competencies fundamental to global citizenship and supporting all students' social, emotional learning. The proposed FY22 budget reflects the resources needed to meet these goals. The proposed FY22 West budget comes in at a 2.5% increase. FY22 circuit breaker funds totaling $30,318 have been applied to prepay the FY22 special education preschool tuition. And that's at account 4088. And the school choice funds totaling $10,000 have been applied to prepay non-instructional technology, which is account 4011. The draft FY22 budget maintains all current academic programs, interventions and the free after-school childcare program. As a result of ongoing negotiations with staff contracts, a salary reserve has been calculated into the budget and is noted at the bottom of the budget Excel worksheet. Also, one full-time educator announced their retirement effective June 30th. And an additional grade three teacher position has been added as a result of the anticipated in-person class size of at least 24 students. Minor to moderate increases in specific line items such as instructional technology, custodial supplies and substitutes are directly linked to health and safety needs due to COVID-19. Substantial decreases in the costs associated with the Cape Cod Collaborative and the speech-language pathologist position moving from 70% to 50% are reflected in the budget. Many line items are level funded. The free after-school childcare program is level funded since Wes has been unable to provide childcare services during the pandemic. Increases and reductions in specific line items are noted in the following charts that I'm going to. Now, let me see. I don't think I'm going to be able to.
If you go down to the bottom of your screen.
Yep, I did that.
It'd be a green thing that says share screen.
Yep.
You want to click on that. It should give you a, a list of things that are on your screen currently. If they're there, you hit it.
Yeah. The thing is, is that I do have it open, but it's not, when I click on the share, it is not listed there. Which is.
You might want to, um, look, open it, close it, and then see if it's in that screen again because it might pop up for you.
Okay. Close this again. No. It's very interesting how it doesn't do that. Let me check files again. I could go to my Google Drive perhaps. No. I can't get it. Thank you though, Rebecca. Uh, budget increases are noted in account 4011, which is non-instructional technology. And the dollar increase is $3,242. And that is to do for the increase at both the Cape internet, Google enterprise, technology licenses and program costs. Account 4015, mentor stipends. And that dollar increase is $3,654. And that is for anticipated retirements. We have about four staff who are retirement age. Um, and right now I do have one retirement, so I was anticipating perhaps up to four. Account number four is they're one, seven substitutes. That dollar increase is $3,660. And what I did because of COVID-related absences, I wanted to be prepared. So I increased the day's absence for educators from seven to 10. 4031, instructional technology, the dollar increase is $5,402. And that's for instructional technology, which includes interactive science websites, our platforms such as CSO, online interventions and assessments and keyboarding. 4052, that line item is custodial supplies. And I increased by an additional $2,000 for additional COVID-related supplies such as spray disinfectant and sanitizer and dispensers and disinfecting wipes. And the last for the budget increase, um, is 4058, which is extraordinary maintenance. And I based this increase on the last three-year average. And I increased it by $4,100. So for the line items that I have increased that I wanted to note today, come to an increase of $22,058. Now, the substantial budget reductions are noted in account number 4035. And that's our special education out of district transportation. And the dollar decrease is $34,435. 4065 is the line item for speech and language pathologist. And that was requested by the pathologist asking to go from 70% to 50% to be able to meet all of her students' needs according to their individualized education plan or their 504 accommodation plan. So that dollar decreased by $27,207. And line item 4098, which is our, um, special education Cape Cod collaborative tuition. And that dollar decrease is $66,062. So the dollar, I mean, the budget reductions in total that I noted today is reduced to $127,704. In summary, the regular day portion of the Wellfleet Elementary proposed FY22 budget increases by $163,649 or 8.27%. And the special education portion decreases by $93,980 or minus 11.58%. The total increase then from the FY21 to the FY22 budget is $69,669 or 2.5%. On behalf of the Wellfleet Elementary School students, faculty and staff, I am profoundly grateful for all that our school community has accomplished under extraordinary circumstances. The hard work of educators, students, office staff, custodians, cafeteria workers and parents is the tribute to the unwavering commitment we have to our students, their education, our families and our community. Thank you. And I'll be happy to provide everybody a copy of this.
That would be great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Outstanding, Mary Beth.
Oh, thank you.
Got these folders. Just everything, just the reduction to the folder, I think, and the, the choice documents that were included were perfect, in my opinion. It wasn't too much information. It was all connected. Places where you could just see, oh, okay, I need to have another look at it. I particularly liked the pie chart because it just tells a story right from the beginning. And just, it's notable how thorough you are and how careful you are to, to really produce something in, in, in such times.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that has a question or a comment? Martha?
Yeah, I just want to, um, actually echo what Betsy has said, Mary Beth. Fantastic work, as usual. But I do have a question about the library. The librarian, it looks like you're in, are you increased, I'm hoping, but I'm not allowed to hope. Off the cuff, I'm hoping that you're increasing the library time. The librarian's time again?
No, it's staying at the 10% because the technology took over at special.
Got it. Okay. All right.
Laura, you had your hand up too.
Yeah, I just wanted to quickly say, I, I went to one of the luncheon learns with Mas, the, um, and it was about budget. And it bored me because it was talking about everything you did. And I was just trying to learn, but the, they're, everything they said for, to do for budgeting was exactly what you did. So I didn't learn anything because you did exactly what they said in terms of how to present a budget. You did it. So, thank you.
Thank you, Laura.
Jill?
Echoing also, it's been said that it's just amazing and highly commendable. And gee, with all the changing targets and all the challenges, um, this is just outstanding. And how great at two and a half percent.
I, I agree. Thank you, Jill. You know, when you look at the FY20 budget was an increase of 3.47. And to have all of the circumstances surrounding us to be able to bring it in at 2.5 is pretty remarkable. But I have to say, it's a collaborative effort with Tom and Giovanna. So I'm grateful to those two.
Great. Thank you so much, everybody. Any other questions or comments?
Just a quick one, Betsy, please. Mary Beth, is this decrease in the special needs budget a one-time thing, or do you see that we're moving? You know, for a long time, we didn't have a huge number of special needs children in the school, and that swelled and increased. And I'd love to think that with the early interventions that have been taking place in the preschool and the specialized early years, that we're moving away from it because we're fixing some of these things. But no, okay, I just.
Unfortunately, no.
I like to hope, too, about things.
Right. I think with the substantially separate special education program that we have.
Yeah.
We will keep students as long as it's appropriate. It's as long as it's the least restrictive environment.
Okay.
So do I foresee every student that's in there to stay with us to grade five? I do not.
Oh, okay, good. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I'm going to move us to reports and information. Jill, Cape Cod Collaborative?
Yes, there have been two meetings since we last met. There was one on December 9th and one on January 13th. The collaborative, unlike school districts, acts as a personnel agent. So we had a lot of personnel things to talk over and vote on. There's been some school districts that have consistently been suspended because they haven't had attendance. Surprisingly enough, even with Zoom, which makes it kind of easier, actually, I find, to attend meetings. Martha's Vineyard and Truro and Provincetown have consistently been suspended as far as voting, but of course, nobody's there to vote, so nobody's attending meetings to vote. But it is unfortunate that those towns hasn't had a representative on the board anyway to help make decisions. Evaluation time, our treasurer, it's time to evaluate him, William Freel, and he's been with us for a while, and the feedback's been very good about William. There's a subcommittee, how, what is it going to look like to review the evaluation for the executive director? Playground like ours has been needed to come down, and right now it's in the planning stage of what will replace what used to be there. Transportation continues to be a very challenging area for the collaborative, obviously because of COVID. And there's been increased athletics from school districts, so that's been complicating and putting a strain on an already strained system because of drivers deciding that because of COVID, they're concerned or medical suggestions not to drive or actually quarantines happening. And the changing environment of buses are running, now they're not, you know, to various school districts. So that's been very challenging. And of course, the Cape geography. Oh, the legislative breakfast. It will be virtual, of course, and it will be interactive. And people on the school committee, as well as select board, as well as finance, are welcome to be a part of this. I don't have information yet as far as how do you participate, how do you register? But it's something to think about, and the date has been set, it appears, for February 12th. So 9:00 to 10:00 o'clock on February 12th, it'll be set up to have our legislators in small groups with us. So again, it hasn't been ironed out exactly what this is going to look like, but there will be topic areas and breakout sessions. And right now, it's kicked around that certain topics, for instance, will be COVID relief, school choice, educational challenges for the future. Hopefully, when everybody is in person in the fall consistently, what is it going to look like for our students? And regionally, you know, the whole Cape, you know, what are these children going to need? I mean, besides some academic gaps and deficits, there will certainly be some trauma, social, emotional trauma, getting back into a groove again. So these are various topics that are being kicked around. And also, in talk about strategic planning, that's another thing that the collaborative is looking forward to as far as before, one of the big topics would be with all the groups, all the participating schools in the region, towns, demographics. Now, it's really common problems, you know, as a result of these very challenging times. What are the common problems that all the districts have? And the collaborative is fluid and flexible, meets the needs of the constituents. So what will that look like as far as the needs of all the districts? So that is something that is being quite considered. It's, it's, there's a lot, you know, our meetings are typically two and a half hours or so, and they're very comprehensive. So to combine two meetings in a short presentation, here's another one that would be important to put out. Dr. Anita Woods has been the director of the special ed programs, in particular, the STAR program. And after 20 years, she will be retiring in June. And when I was teaching at DY, kindergarten, half-day, and half-day integrated special needs, I actually met her there in my classroom because she was working for early intervention, and she had a 2.9-year-old that was going to be segwayed into my classroom. So Anita and I both go way back. But Anita has been such an integral, important part of the collaborative, and she's going to be sorely missed. I mean, she is a powerhouse, and 20 years. So there's going to be some restructuring. There might be two people to do what she used to do or won't be doing anymore, but that's to be announced. She has, there's a wonderful assistant to her, Christina, Christine Caputo, and Christine is wonderful. So she will definitely have a major role once, well, she already has a major role, but she will definitely be continuing Anita's legacy. I think that's good enough for now, two meetings.
Thank you, Jill.
You're welcome.
Any questions on the preschool enrollment? Okay. PTA, nothing right, Mary Beth? I haven't received a Zoom or anything like that. Okay. Strategic Planning Committee, Martha, is that you? Nothing? Behavioral Health Task Force?
We met on December 21st, believe it or not. And from what I remember, we spent a lot of time talking with some of the people who work in the middle school and high school, dealing with kids who are in crisis. And I've said this before, one of the big issues that is happening right now is because kids are only in school half-time, and some kids are doing completely all remote, it's really hard to reach out and get those, those kids and to be able to observe them the way teachers would in a regular classroom. And the teachers are the first line. People in the classroom are the people who see the kids the most. And they're the first line in terms of letting people know, letting the support staff, the school adjustment counselors, the psychologists, the guidance counselors know when kids are really struggling. So the kids who seem to be most at risk are kids who are actually allowed to be in the school four days a week. So those kids are being monitored much more carefully, and that's, that's a really good thing. We have been talking again about the way to get kids who have been hospitalized back into the school. And Jill, I want to thank you again for that suggestion of checking out what, Jill, I don't, oh, there you are, you're right next to me. Hi. Checking out the programs that are at the collaborative. The programs that we've selected are the MTSS and the Bright program. Bright program is a program, I think, based in Brookline originally for kids after hospitalization. It's mostly for kids in high school and middle school. And it's, it's, it's been very effective in other places. I think a lot of research and work went into that. And what happens is kids, there's a big amount of coordination with the teacher, with the guidance counselor, the school adjustment counselor, as well as outside practitioners. So it's, and families, of course, so it seems to be working very, very well for that. And it's been research-based. The other thing that's happening is that there's an effort on the part of the middle school and the high school staff to keep kids with peers as much as possible. I think a few minutes ago, we were talking about the less, the less intervention, the better in terms of how we place our kids in the elementary school. And that seems to be something that's important for the entire district. And we are meeting again, I think, at the very beginning of February, so it will be before our next meeting. And one of the things we'll be talking about, I hope, is how do I identify kids who are at risk? We certainly need more people, you know, we, we need more people. There's one school adjustment counselor, I think, who's working with 20 kids, and it's, it's a lot. And we were talking about grant funding. There's money for rural areas that we've been talking about, maybe thinking about applying for. And I think there's something like $3 million available for grants, according to Julie and Sierra, who's doing what he can for the school system, which is really great. That's it. Our next meeting's February 1st at 3:15.
Thank you, Martha. So from the Wellness Subcommittee, anything there? No? Okay. And future agenda items? Jan and then Martha.
Yes, I would like, please, to be put on the report's agenda next month to give you all a report on the Housing Task Force Committee work that I've been involved with. I think you should know what's going on with that.
Great. Will do.
I was going to suggest having a conversation about school choice because there's been so much in the news about it. I think there's a lawsuit going on in Vermont, for example, that I have an article about. But if we're discussing that at our, are we discussing that at the next joint meeting, Tom?
School choice itself?
Yeah.
No.
No, okay. I just like to know more about the ins and outs about it. I don't feel well enough informed to think clearly about it. I would, I would like that. It doesn't necessarily have to be next month if we have a full agenda, but it might be an interesting discussion to have.
And just to clarify, as it pertains to Wes, or just in general, are you thinking about our school in particular and the ins and outs around how it affects us or in general?
I'm always thinking of our school. I would say both, perhaps. I, I don't know.
Okay, thank you. I'll just write that down. Okay. All right, thank you. So then I'll take, I will take a motion to adjourn, it looks like, unless anybody's got anything else.
We have to approve the minutes?
I'm sorry, I missed that. Approval of minutes, I apologize. Any notes on the minutes? Okay, Martha?
I move to approve the minutes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Great. All right, and then I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
Yeah, thank you. All right, again, thanks for your flexibility, everybody, and we will see you all at the next Zoom. Something, Jan, did you need?
Did you vote the minutes?
Did we vote them? I'm sorry.
I'm trying.
I have another meeting in like three minutes, so I'm trying to.
I'm sorry, okay.
I'm already forward-thinking, you're correct. Please vote for the minutes, everybody, so I can take that.
Thank you.
Okay.
I apologize. And now vote for the adjournment.
Bye, everybody.
I'm going to play you out, Martha.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, and thank you. Thank you, Fred.
Oh, wow. Bravo.
You're supposed to leave now.